It's on the way. Coming to Puerto Rico next.
Matter of time.
Yeah. Be there in six days. I go to Greece next week. I come back on the nineteenth, on the twentieth, I board here in Porco and Ramo.
How are you, man?
Off to the race. Looking good.
Do you have to be on there for like a day or two?
Yeah, first revenue, you know, just insurance policy, insurance, business plan.
Wish something probably would.
Something probably. Okay. I usually go with the. For iPhone. First class, took a team about three or four with me. Now for this, I'm taking one, so. Best case scenario.
Hey, how are you? Good, good. How are you guys? How are you? How are you?
Best case scenario, I work during the day.
I'm gonna try.
Where'd you gamble? You need to beat on somebody.
Uh, that's what I got. Eric, yeah.
Best case scenario, I work during the day and gamble at night. Worst case, I work during the day and night.
David, I don't think we've met him. Hi, I'm David.
I'm bringing vendors and ports on the sixth.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm Rashane.
How are you?
Nice to meet you.
Young man.
Yeah.
How are you?
Hello, everyone. I'm Cam.
David.
Hi.
That's a legend of the scene right there.
Hello. I really should put my name tag on it. I just have to apologize.
What did that baby cost?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
Oh, good.
No, I did.
Point two.
Pershing.
Two point two.
Pershing. But thank you.
One hundred ninety.
Well, is your phone on vibrate, sir?
I guess I give enough one stop.
Are everybody about to get started? If you can find your place. Sorry, we have standing room only tonight. The city council is here. We didn't, we only suspected what this might be. We didn't know till this afternoon what the actual tenants might be. So now we know. But we're here tonight to hear from the applicants. No decision can be made tonight. It can't be voted to be approved or to be denied tonight. We're just here to hear about, we're just here to listen to what the project's gonna be, what their proposal is gonna be, and then hear your comments and suggestions, okay? We realize that most people here are probably gonna be against it. So we don't need a hundred people coming up saying we're opposed to it. We get, we get that y'all are gonna be opposed to it by and large. But if you have, and so we don't need a bunch of repetitive comments. But if you have ideas or concerns that haven't been brought up yet, when you have a chance to speak, and it hasn't been brought up yet, please come up and speak to those. Also, offer your ideas and suggestions. You know, if it's turned down, it's one, one thing. But if it's, you know, what would you do to make it better? If it was to come through, how would you suggest to make it better, more palatable? We want, not just that we don't want it, but also, you know, what would you like to see if you, if it did come? All right? We're about to get started. We will take questions once the presentation's over. And we all hear, what you.
Having nothing to do with this.
Oh, no.
You're not gonna do it like normal?
It's just gonna be, it's gonna be about the project only tonight. Just a workshop.
We have two quick questions.
Okay. Okay, I can get it to you after or before.
Now?
I can, if you wanna go and talk.
I'm Denise Price. I live at thirty-two eighteen Hillpoint Street. I come here often. So I'm smiling. I wonder what the status is on straightening out Citrus Grove Road. I passed in a tenth of a mile, a semi, a fire truck, and two rock haulers.
All right, again, tonight's about this workshop, about this one topic. It's not like a normal council meeting where they take comments on everything. But with Citrus Grove Road, it's about to go out for bid now, and probably the next, within the next month or two.
And how long will that take before it is?
That's, it's the county's project.
Okay, it's the county.
Yeah.
So I'd have to go up to Traver's.
Yeah.
And one other thing.
This is not the forum for that.
What's the status of the Citrus Grove Development formerly known as Founder's Ridge? Where is that?
That's a discussion for another day. I can meet with you afterwards and give you the updates on those.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much, guys. Thank you.
I don't need one. I got my phone. But we've got a minute left. I think everyone pretty much is here. Yep. I'm sorry? No, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm sorry. I was talking kinda like to council just to make sure everybody was here before I start call to order. Thank you. I don't really need a microphone, bud. All right, guys. Good evening. It is six-thirty. Call to order, Mineola City Council Workshop Meeting. I have a moment of silence and Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Hernandez. Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda review.
Looks good.
Looks good. Thank you, sir. Joe? Perfect. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Pam Service. I am Vice Mayor for the City of Mineola. We do have two council members that are out, actually, mayor and a council member. If I can get a motion to excuse our mayor, Pat Kelly.
So moved.
I have a first. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to excuse Debbie Flynn?
So moved.
I have a first. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Thank you. With that said, this evening, thank you all for coming out. We do have an empty seat up front here and one over here as well, if anybody would like to sit down. And any other empty seats, please feel free to take advantage of that. In the meantime, we are here just for this workshop only, and I apologize, ma'am. It is just for our workshop only. It's to talk about this topic, this topic only. We are not gonna be voting on anything this evening. It is strictly applicant's gonna speak, audience will speak, council will speak, and then the applicant will answer questions that you all have for them. I know the majority of the, well, I shouldn't say I know, but I have a feeling that the majority of the people here are not wanting certain things. And I am the first one to show of hands. Anyone that does not want. Let me just put this politically correct. Certain things out there that, uh, the big box. Can I get a show of hands that people don't want the big box out there? Please. Thank you. And with that said, we can kind of minimize those expressions. Cause I could see it, I feel it, I know it. I've read it on social media. Now going down to the club warehouse. Can I get a show of hands if you do not want the club warehouse? Well, one, the big box is one thing and the club warehouse is another. I understand what you all are saying, but just from what I've been reading, what I've been told, those are two separate entities. So now that we have that out there as well, and thank you for shaking of the head. You know what I'm talking about. Thank you. With that said, moving forward, if I can have everyone up here, please introduce yourself. But I forgot one more important thing. We are gonna be setting the timer on so everyone can get a chance. It is a three-minute timer. Once that three-minute is up, please, out of respect for everyone here, please step away and please let the next one come forward. Okay? All, just to respect everyone's time here. We all know what the show of hands came about. Let's keep those comments to, you know, our applicants to have seen and they saw. And then we can move on to other topics out there that we can't really just talk off the top of our hands like that. Now that we're here, can I get an introduction from our applicants, please? Start with.
Richard German.
Dan Edwards with Sunterra Communities.
Rashane Ellington with Walmart.
Dan Albo with Walmart.
Thomas Graham, Senior Planner with the city.
Eric Roche, Planning Consultant to the city.
It's hard for us to hear and that.
Okay. Do we have another microphone? Or does anybody? Should we take that one?
For now.
Well, for now, yes. Thank you. And I'm sorry about that.
Dave Jaeger.
Again, Pam Service.
Councilman Eric Hernandez.
Councilman Joseph Saunders.
Mark with the City of Mineola.
Scott Gurkhan, City Attorney.
Jennifer Koch, Assistant City Attorney.
Thank you.
Okay. Trying to think here. Discussion items. Item number one, Mineola Marketplace. Did you wanna start, Scott, or should we just let the applicants?
Harvey, I can introduce it a little bit if you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, as has already been mentioned tonight, this is about the parcel of property that, for those of you who don't know, and I imagine most of you do, it is the property that is north of Citrus, or Citrus Grove Road and the Turnpike, and just east of North Hancock. It's approximately seventy acres of property. It's been, gosh, nearly twenty years since the Hills of Mineola was developed here in the City of Mineola. And the applicant is coming tonight to propose an amendment to that development. There have been several developments already. Let me stand up, it's a little easier. There've already been several amendments to this development through the years. Most appropriately, I'm guessing about two thousand and fifteen, the Village Center was placed on this property. What the applicant is doing tonight is wanting to change that Village Center to the proposed development that you have. It's fair because there have been several proposed developments. As you know, the Crooked Can Development was recently done a few years ago. That was a change to the original planned development. We've also had the hospital that has come in, which was a change to the original planned development. So what you have tonight is yet another proposed change to the original development. So please, hear the applicant out, be fair, and let's, let's make Mineola proud. One thing that you should know is although this is a public meeting, it is not a public hearing. That's important to know because although the city likes to hear from the crowd, there is no legal right to speak this evening. So this is a privilege. Please, please don't abuse it, I guess is what I'm saying. So the applicant will be going forward. They will be proposing what they'd like to do. After that, usually council has questions. After that, they typically will open it up for questions from the audience, and then the developer will usually respond to those, so.
Perfect.
Okay?
Thank you. Get off my passing it down. Who'd like to start? Perfect.
I'm gonna go up to the podium.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Richard German. I'm a partner in Sunterra Communities. We are the developer of the Hills of Mineola. I've met a lot of you before, and I think you, you know me. My partner is here. His name is Dan Edwards. He'll speak in a little while. Also with Sunterra Communities. With us tonight also is Andrew Ivey, our engineer. Brent Spain, our lawyer. We have two Walmart representatives, Dan Albo and Rashane Ellington, both sitting up here. They'll speak in a little while. And Becky Wilson, their attorney. And their engineer, also Josh Lockhart. Thanks. Just.
Here, Dan, you wanna do the slide? We'll go to the first slide.
Just, you know, a lot of you aware that the fact that we had something approved on this back in two thousand twenty-three that never came to fruition. This PUD, as, as Scott Gurkhan said, was designated as this, the commercial area, and it's seventy acres, which is pretty big. We had a conceptual plan, which.
Go ahead and go to that one.
Which was. Which some of you have seen before. It was approved in two thousand twenty-three. We failed on that. We had, it was a bad plan. We got no takers. We were unable, here we are, almost three years later. The apartment site was gonna be on the Turnpike because the city wanted it that way. We couldn't find apartment guys to take that. They didn't wanna be on the Turnpike. We did have a hotel and an office user, possibly. But the Lifestyle Center, which most of you were interested in, where you thought there would be a lot of restaurants and other things. Over the last few years, we had one serious restaurant operator for about five thousand feet, and another maybe. Well, there was a total of ninety thousand feet for that Lifestyle Center. So obviously, with that type of use, we could never build it. And the, the main reason is there was just no driver. We had no traffic builder to bring enough people to that location. Maybe someday way down the road, it would happen. And we'll, you'll see some, we'll do some examples tonight of what's happened down at Hamlin and Lake Nona, and you're gonna see what happens when you get a traffic driver and how then it builds up. So with today's construction costs, the development costs, we, we couldn't make this site plan that you see before you work at all. We could not get any traction. We had some traction for a couple out parcels. But once again, the out parcel dri, uh, users did not have, there wasn't enough traffic to make it work. So, I mean, as an example, let me just show you. No, you can't see this, and I can't really hand it out. But this is, we identified a list of users for this site. Primarily our out parcels with, with Walmart and Sam's being interested in the big parcels. Half of this list is in red. So that means even with Walmart and Sam's, they turned us down. Those, and these were users that we selected that we said, we think these would be quality. We want them here. Half of them said yes. And obviously, some were talking to. But the interesting thing is, once again, even with a traffic builder such as Walmart and Sam's, we still got rejected for a lot of users with a lot of users. So this is where we are today. We're now presenting a new plan, which we hope that you'll take a look at and consider. My partner, Dan, will present that plan to you. So I'll let him take it from here.
Thank you. Again, my name is Dan Edwards with Sunterra Communities. To Richard's point, what, what we're gonna get to, and you guys have seen in the, in the corners, so we'll leave that up for a while, but we'll put that on the board here. I think we have a pointer. Yep. That works here. So this is the new master plan concept that we are, we're proposing. Obviously, no surprise, we've already talked about it. The, the two big anchors are the, the Walmart, which is the one on the right, and the Sam's Club on the left. You can, you can see what we've done is we've placed them in the back. They are up against the Turnpike. What Richard was talking about was previously there was an apartment complex. That apartment complex, oop, I went to the. Sorry. That apartment complex is now on the right of the site plan. And so there is, there's frontage there, and this is for everybody's edification. This is Hancock right here and Citrus Grove Road. The existing Publix is that white box that's located there next to that roundabout. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're, you're right. That's the Publix right there. That's the storage unit that's, that's been built. The, the important thing to note here is we, we understand some of the concerns. What we've tried to do is maximize what we can, what we can get on, on this parcel with these, with the out parcels. I keep hitting the wrong button. Sorry, guys. So what you see in the front along Citrus Grove Road are the out parcels. And obviously strategically, that's done in order to have that as the first visibility off of Citrus Grove Road, as well as that's the most attractive spot for the, the retail users. That was part of the problem we had with the, the old town center concept. A lot of users did not want to be in the back. It's not as attractive. It's hard to get quality users. And so what we've really tried to do is maximize what we can do as far as driving the traffic with the anchors, placing them in the back, and then maximizing what we can get with the out parcels. So kinda going from Hancock on, we have a parcel here that's got three different tenants on it. And again, just for everybody's edification, this is, this is all proposed, right? We don't have anybody officially signed up on these out parcels here. To Richard's point, based off of these anchors, we've been able to have this conversation with a lot of different groups. There is significant interest. There are some that are passing on it still. But there's interest on this corner from Chick-fil-A or somebody like them. There is interest from several groups as far as a coffee shop as well, as some sort of drive-through, quick-service restaurant. The next parcel is the gas station. This will be a Sam's Club-operated gas station. It will be open to members and non-members. So anybody from the public would be able to use it. But we, we've heard and, and from the public and others that a gas station is, is definitely needed in this area. Moving on from there is a couple different restaurant parcels. So we have a restaurant parcel here, as well as a restaurant parcel here. We've got several users that we are talking to. You know, Ale House, Darden Restaurants. But there's, there's a, a list of different users that we are looking at that based off of the traffic that's driven to this and this location and that spot, they have significant interest. And then finally, we have a three-tenant retail building over here. So you see these common and different areas. We haven't pinned down exactly, but we've got interest from First Watch. There are some boutique fitness centers, nail, hair, that type of place. They would be interested in that and have, have continued to show that there is a depth of what we would be able to do. Those users, and a lot of these users, just for everybody's edification, are very hard to get without the traffic driver, which is what we've really been trying to, to generate as far as having these, these tenants here. This is kind of a summary of it, just for everybody's edification. We are working with Bainbridge on luxury apartments, so that's what you see over there. There would be four-story buildings. There would be, we, the, the underlying zoning that Scott was referring to has density for three hundred units on this parcel. So it would be three hundred units or less on that. And this is just kind of a rundown of that, that summary that I had. And I'll turn it back over to Richard.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan. You can see, I mean, it's been a tough few years for us trying to get off the ground with something that both serves the community and something we can make economically work. The map you see up there, I don't know if you can read it very well, but right now, with what you have, which is nothing, Targeted from that location, Target's eight miles round trip, Costco's thirteen miles round trip, Home Depot's eight point four miles round trip, and Walgreens, seven miles round trip. So that's really what, without anything, that's what you live with at the moment. Do the next one. Oh, I got it. Oh, sorry. One of the things that we found very appealing, and believe me, over the last three years, we've talked to a lot of people. By the way, all those people I just read as an example, we've talked to everybody about this site. And Walmart and Sam's, we're excited about. Why are we excited? Because we've looked, and I've, I've visited about four of their stores, and I'm impressed with what they do today. Their pricing against the Publix across the street, there is no comparison. What you get in, in a Walmart is the convenience. You get a grocery store, fuel, clothing, appliances, garden center, automotive, pharmacy, sports department, office supplies, vision, toy department. I mean, you get twenty stores in one as compared to what we have today, which is nothing. In emergencies, Walmart is, is one of the best in restocking after hurricanes and other emergencies. They have full generators, so their store will never close. I mean, there's just so many advantages. The, the Sam's Club memberships are more cost-effective than Costco's and BJ's. I'll let them talk about how many jobs they provide and what else they do and their taxes, real estate taxes they pay to the city and the county. So we think it's, you know, a real advantage. Maybe some of you are objecting to a big box, but we have a lot of acres here to try to deal with. If we were trying to deal with a ten-acre site or something like that, and we wanted to do one, those little Lifestyle Centers that we talked about earlier, could probably work, but it just doesn't work on seventy acres that we have to deal with. So with that being said, Dan, you wanna come back up? Dan's gonna present some very interesting case studies, which I, I think you guys need to really listen to because this is what Walmart and Sam's have done for two other areas, very meaningful areas in our city.
Thank you. Yeah, so I, I guess let me preface this by saying, we, we saw the hands. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a surprise. To, to kinda give everybody a little bit of clarity. I mean, this was not something that we ran to. What was talked about earlier is we, you know, we've had a, a different plan in the works for a couple years unsuccessfully. We looked at, as Richard mentioned, a lot of different other retailers or tenants to try to see what we could do to drive traffic. Walmart wasn't necessarily the thing we jumped at. They were interested. But I, I think what we wanna address is a little bit of what seems to be the, the negative connotation about it. And, and I think what, what we really have done is to kinda study developments that have occurred in the greater Orlando area. Both of these have happened in the past decade. One in two thousand sixteen, one in two thousand seventeen to start. And that's, that's the Hamlin Town Center and the Lake Nona Landing. I don't know, raise of hand, how many people are familiar with these developments? Okay, so most, most of you guys? So these are what, I, I, I would go ahead and say, and Richard and I are in the development business. These are two developments that are done by great developers locally here. Tavistock in Lake Nona and Boyd Development in Hamlin. And I, I personally, I know everything's subjective, but I, I live out in the Lake Nona area, and we've been out in Hamlin a lot. And when we go to these developments, my opinion is that they're first-class, they're really well-done, and what's happened there has been a great benefit to the area and the surrounding areas. So with that, one of them has a Walmart, which is Hamlin, and Lake Nona has both a Walmart and a Sam's. And so I think the question came for us, like, as we're looking at this, to say, what, why is there a negative connotation, but yet two of the premier developments in the greater Orlando area, they don't just have Walmarts. Walmarts were the first things that were built in their commercial and retail center. So we wanted to do a little bit of a study and kind of explain that to you and show that to you guys so you could see, because we get it. We understand that sometimes that negative connotation comes across, but it sometimes it, it, it feels a little unfair because when you go to some of these developments, I, I think they're as good as a lot of the developments that have been done, especially when you're kind of looking at the areas of growth and what's been happening for newer and upcoming areas, which this is. Cause there's been a lot of growth in the City of Mineola, and obviously with the Turnpike interchange, there's some similarities to what's occurred. So here's the first one, which is Hamlin. What you can see is, and, and there's a radius that's been drawn. Hamlin, the, the Walmart was built in two thousand sixteen. And so there's been an analysis as far as two thousand sixteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-four, just to see, you can see the population growth, right? In two miles, it went from eight thousand to, to nineteen thousand in a, in a matter of eight years. The other thing I think is a misconception as far as, okay, Walmart's gonna bring down values, it's gonna do X, Y, and Z. And what we're finding is that's, that couldn't be farther from the truth. I think Hamlin's not too far from here. If you go to Hamlin, I think property values, you can see medium home value went from five thirty-three to eight nineteen over the course of those eight years. That's since the Walmart was built. So just to give you a little idea of, of what it was, this was two thousand seventeen. You can see a Walmart. You can see a Publix that's under construction. There is nothing else out at the Hamlin Town Center. This was the original development that occurred. And so if you go there today. And so if you go there today, this is what you see, right? So all of that has started to fill in, and Hamlin's very big, right? All of the town center is much bigger than the parcel that we're talking about here. Our parcel's about 76 acres or so, I think. You know, all of Hamlin, which you see, and there's even more outside of this map, is, you know, probably three times larger as far as the area. So we're limited, but I'll get to that, because I think it's important as far as when you look at the size. Here's kind of some of those statistics that we just talked about. And then kind of the bottom point is that the restaurant and retail users began to fill the surrounding areas as soon as the Walmart and Publix were built. It still took years, right? That is not, even at Hamlin, is not something that happened overnight. So to kind of go back to it, this was the beginning, Walmart getting built with nothing out there, and then this is the 2025 aerial, still more coming. If you drive out to Hamlin, there are still new out parcels that are under development that are ongoing. Next one is Lake Nona. So Lake Nona is a little bit further away, obviously. This location, for those that aren't familiar, is off of Narcoosee, south of 417. Unlike the Hamlin one, but like what we're proposing here, they actually built a Walmart and a Sam's Club in 2017 together. You can see the similar statistics as far as the property values and the growth of the area. Went from 9,000 to 30,000. Medium home values went from 559 to 844. So again, the stigma that, hey, it's going to bring down property values is just, it's proven to not be true, especially in these developments and the newer markets, which we believe Hamlin, Hamlin-Lake Nona is very similar to what's happening here in Mineola and the growth off the Turnpike. So similar story here. This is a 2017 aerial. You see Sam's Club, Walmart. None of those out parcels have been started to get built. As you continue on to 2025, obviously, the market has come full fruition. There are retail restaurants. Everything has filled into these markets. So it's, again, not to keep going on to the point, but this is what is needed for some of these commercial developments to thrive. You have to get the traffic, and I know everybody has. And again, it's very subjective as far as, when I went through the list of users and retail and restaurants that are interested. We could probably take a poll, and everybody would be different about what you want. So we can't please everybody in that regard, but what we want to do is give ourselves the biggest options possible. Have the most, you know, first-class retail, first-class restaurants that we can offer in these areas. In order to do that and to make them thrive and successful and have their interest, we've got to be able to provide them something. And these are the examples that have occurred in Lake Nona and Hamlin. And again, here's kind of the Lake Nona statistics that I just talked about. Very similar. Once the Walmart and Sam's went up in 2017, you start to see everything get filled in. So the big conclusion, and I've kind of already addressed the conclusion here, but for both of them, once they were built, in the case of Hamlin, it was Walmart and Publix, which we obviously have the Publix already existing. In Lake Nona, it was Walmart and Sam's. You start to see 20, 30, dozens of these restaurants and retail components start to fill in over the next five, six, seven years, right? And not just, it didn't take five or six, seven years. They start immediately. They will immediately start coming, but in order to do a full build-out. The important part to kind of focus on when you look at these two, though, is what we are talking about tonight is not the same as that entire area. As I mentioned earlier, Hamlin Town Center is a much larger area than what we're talking about tonight, as is Lake Nona Landing and a lot of the Lake Nona development. What is similar is what is happening in the city of Mineola, near the interchange and all the developments that have occurred. So everybody's familiar, obviously, with the Publix in that shopping center being in existence. Advent is obviously going up right now. Hill City Center is up here. The Crooked Can is, it's under development. I don't know what the status of when they're going to finish that is. But this is one small component. If you're going to compare, if you're going to compare this to when you drive to other developments like Hamlin and Lake Nona, you have to look at the whole scheme, because that's what we're talking about. There is significant amount of commercial that is zoned and approved. Obviously, they'll have to come back for final approvals inside of Hill City Center and Citrus Grove PUD. I want to say there's 450,000 square feet of commercial, mixed-use commercial, and other commercial inside of Citrus Grove PUD, and I think another half million square feet of commercial retail inside of Hill City Center. So we know that everybody wants as many users as possible. What I'll tell you is, it's not all going to happen on one parcel, right? It's not going to fit. You can't get everything that everybody wants. What is going to happen is, if these anchors can come and generate the traffic that we need, these parcels are going to get built. We're going to get great users here. The Publix is already existing and has already brought users there. But additionally, Crooked Can will come. The traffic that will be generated will continue to fill out. And a lot of the uses that everybody wants, and again, it's a subjective thing to say, what is, what users, what restaurants do you want, what retail providers do you want? They're going to come, but they need these traffic drivers, right? So the more we can bring, the more we can generate the traffic here, the more users are going to be interested in coming here, the better product it's going to be. And again, I just, you know, I ask you to think about it, because if you drive to, if you drive to Hamlin or you drive to Lake Nona today, I don't think you immediately just think, oh, my goodness, there's just a Walmart. But that's how it started. There was just a Walmart. There was just a Sam's. And the next thing you know, all of these retail, all these restaurants start to fill in. And we think that this is the perfect location for, to duplicate that kind of success. And Walmart being a great partner and a great driver of traffic, and again, all the benefits that Richard brought up as far as the highlights that they do and being a great partner, and I think they're going to talk about that here. So I'm going to turn it over to Rochelle with Walmart to talk a little bit about Walmart.
Thank you. All right, so I want to preface what I'm about to say by saying, there is somewhat of a negative connotation with Walmart in the community, and my job here today is to change that connotation. Obviously, because here's the thing, I will tell you, we don't do a good job of publicizing what we do in the community. So I just want to share with you why it's important to have us in the community. And I'm going to start by saying, I don't think any of our competitors can beat us in pricing. I think it's very safe to say that. We pride ourselves in being the everyday low-price retailer. And not only that, we've focused so much on providing that omnichannel experience. So just think about Walmart in the community. We already deliver in services as little as an hour. If Walmart is in your community, we're looking at providing as less as 40 minutes. So you can be at home making dinner, and you can forget an ingredient, and it's at your doorstep in 40 minutes. So just those important things. And just recently this year, we launched Walmart Delivery for our pharmacies. So not only you can call your doctor, get your prescription filled, and Walmart will bring it to your home for you. So a lot of good services that we provide. But just to think about our community impact and what we do, just in FY '25, we paid 368 million in taxes in Florida and over 1.2 billion in custom taxes collected and returned. Hurricane recovery, we've done a lot with hurricane recovery, just not in Florida, but in the United States. Most often, we're the first ones to show up on the scene on hurricane recovery. There are so many times where other companies, even FEMA, we've showed up in communities before FEMA, because we have the resources, we have the trucks, we have our drivers that are committed. So we're always first to be on the scene. We've matched so many in-kind donations to help with recovery of communities, to make sure that we're not only there for business, but we're there when our communities need us the most. Another thing that we do is just, when it comes to reopening stores, obviously, we make sure that our associates are safe, but as soon as stores are ready to be opened safely, we also are the first retailers to be able to open stores. A little bit on community support. So annually, we've invested in grants products to aid local organizations and first responders. Last year alone, we donated 122 million in cash and in-kind donations, 72 million pounds of food. So when you think about it, our Walmarts, we're in there, our local community, whether it's the food bank, shelters, whatever that is, we donate a lot of our merchandise to those organizations. So we don't discard food that is good. We make sure that our local food banks can show up and get those food for families in need in the community. And just in Florida alone, we partner with over 1,600 base suppliers. So think about it, if you're a business, you're a small business, and I'll tell you, just in my experience, I've ran stores for Walmart, we pride ourselves in having local in our stores. So if you have a local business and you're trying to get in Walmart, the best way to do that is through your local Walmart. In Florida alone, we spent 8.8 billions with these suppliers, supplying over 63,000 local jobs in the community. Okay, so I want to talk a little bit about what we actually offer from a competitive, because I think, and I'll tell you guys this, just a story about myself. When I left college, I got recruited by Walmart, and I was like, hey, I'm going to do this because I need a job, and it's a stepping stone. But when I got to Walmart and see the opportunities that Walmart provided, just one from a career growth perspective and competitive pay, 13 years later, I'm still here. And honestly, I'll tell you, it was just a job that I needed out of college. But I'm going to share with you some of the competitive compensation that we provide. So when it comes on to our health and wellbeing, we pride ourselves in the packages that we provide for associates. So medical, dental, and vision, as long as you are a full-time associate, you qualify for those benefits. One of the things that I really love to call out is how we provide services for even associates that are at home. You don't need to go see a doctor, but we have access to doctor-in-demand counseling. We provide, just not for the associate, but for their entire family, we provide counseling. We also have a center of excellence that is covered under our healthcare, which covers care for complex conditions, so whether it's heart, cancer, joint replacement, medical conditions such as those. And then when I think about our maternal or parental benefits, very, very great benefits. Right now, as a mom, you can get up to 16 weeks, which is four months off, and our fathers are able to take three months off all paid benefits right now with Walmart. And that's for all full-time, and then part-time associate qualify for some of those benefits as well. Our 401K, really, really great matching program. We match our associates up to 6% of their annual salary. And associate discounts, obviously, making sure that our associates' wellbeing, having the resources that they need to live, we offer Walmart discount for associates for not only Walmart, but Sam's Club membership at a discounted price. Our associates are all able to purchase stock options. So the day that you started at Walmart, you get the option to invest in our stock options. And not only that, we have life insurance and disability that protects our associates when they're not able to work. Another option that our associates benefit from is access to getting paid early. So you don't have to wait until the Friday of payday. There's options that we provide to get our associate pay as early as Tuesday of the week of pay week. Vacation time, we also offer paid vacation packages. One of the things that we've invested in lately that is super important to career development is we now offer free college tuition. So 100% of college and tuition fees paid for associate to start GED and getting a bachelor's degree in certain institutions. There's a lot of career advancement. Like I told you guys, for me, it was a stepping stone, but I turned it into a career. I started working my way up from an assistant manager to now where I oversee over eight stores for Walmart under my portfolio. One thing that we also provide is financial assistance for associates that are able to do adoption-related expenses. And not only that, a lot of discounts, so whether an associate is taking a vacation, discounts on cell phone, but just a lot of miscellaneous expenses. And then also, we provide assistance for associate from a legal perspective if they need legal representation to help with fees and then any financial assistance they need in those areas.
Thank you. So I said it earlier without the microphone. My name is Dan Albo. I'm with Walmart. I'm a real estate manager, so I'm actually based in Orlando, cover Ocala-Sal. So all I focus on is helping Walmart build stores and communities. Haven't done a lot of these, but I do want to say thank you. I realize some of you took time away from your families and brought your families, and obviously, you're very passionate about your communities. I understand a lot of you. I saw from the hands, not supportive, but just urging you to keep an open mind. And what I really like about this structure is give us feedback. If it does happen, let us know what we could do to. We want to be a good partner or a good part of the community. We want you guys to be proud of the Walmart. So looking forward to that. We'll be taking a lot of notes. I'm going to be talking about enhancements to our building, which isn't my expertise, but I'll be talking about what we've done to hopefully show you what the Walmart's going to look like that you can be proud of. We've done a lot of enhancements above what our normal prototype is. So this view, which is kind of small from there, but this is the view kind of from behind the out parcels of what our prototype is. And there's a few more that we'll see the upgrades that we did. But this is, again, behind the out parcels. One thing you can see here is we, obviously, it's not just a sea of parking. We have islands with landscaping meant to break it up. And then if you zoom in, again, it's going to be kind of hard to see, but there are significant upgrades above our prototype here. On the bottom part of our building, we have stone veneer. And that, you'll see that in the next one, our pharmacy drive-through and next to our garden center. But we also have, we have those metal awnings above the windows, which is also not prototype. We did it for shading and just, again, to enhance the Walmart a little more. This one, again, unless you have good eyesight, you probably can't see the features that well, but there is stone veneer and then vinyl sliding, which is also not proto. It's usually just smooth concrete. It's going to have more of a brick feel. And yeah, really, it's, again, it's, I wish you can see it better. Hopefully, you guys have good eyes. But there have been a lot of upgrades done to the building. And then this is our garden center. So typically around our garden center, we just have a chain-link fence. We've done an elevated fence with, again, the stone veneer that lines the fence with the enhanced cornice on top. And then that's the side with the vinyl and more stone veneer. And this is the Sam's Club. So we've done it so they're not matching, they're not identical buildings, but they do have some similar features. And the Sam's Club as well does have enhancements. Next to the Sam's Club signage, there's Nichiha. And then they also have the stone veneer under it that matches our stone veneer, and they have the metal awnings as well, as well as the concrete that I talked about earlier that has, I forgot the technical term for it, I don't know if you know it, but it's, it's ephesus and it's the non-smooth, the non-smooth CMU. But it's, again, I wish you could see this better, but it is enhanced. Yes, that's the other technical term. Thank you. That's the other technical term. Thank you. So. And this is, this is the other side with, with the vinyl. And again, in the parking lot, you can see a lot of landscaping. It's not meant just to be a concrete parking lot and it'll be broken up. And happy to take, happy to take feedback on how to make, again, we want to be part of the community and here to listen. I'm sorry? And I'll give it back to Richard here. We'll take questions after the presentation's done.
Thank you.
I think we have probably a few more comments, but we'll start with questions so we have time and let you all get your questions in and we can try to answer them. The only thing is, if this doesn't work out for me, Rochelle, I kind of like the benefit package, 'cause I'm a little old though. So anyway, we'll, maybe we'll turn this dais around or we can just turn the mic around. So you want to start asking?
All right, guys, I'm proud of you guys, everybody's being professional. Thank you all very much. Always proud of our citizens and our Meniala folks. If you will come in, state your name and address, make sure you sign in. If you have any questions, ideally be, you know, you're in favor of it for XYZ. I'm sure no one's gonna come up and say that. But if you're opposed to it, why are you opposed to it? What have you seen at a different Walmart that you don't like? And then, what would you like to see, you know, if it did come? So if you will, thank you all very much. Thank you for being professional. And again, no decisions can be made tonight. What we'll do is we'll have everybody ask your questions and then we'll have the applicants respond to all of them after all the questions have been asked. Does that make sense? It'll move a lot faster.
Excuse me, sir. Can you please announce that we have to respect our three-minute timer so we can respect everyone's time here as well? Did you all hear that? I'm sorry.
Three-minute timer, three-minute timer.
Thank you.
Before I speak, also, make sure you sign in either upfront. I didn't hear if that was said earlier. Make sure to sign in so that, okay, thank you. Nathan Foch, seven oh seven Blue Citrus Lane. Hello, everyone. First, I want to say, before I say my comments, I actually, out of school, worked as management in the distribution center. So my first job was also with Walmart. So a lot of the social stuff, I would agree with. We shipped lots of stuff during hurricanes, so I didn't want to take that away from you. I think a lot of what you said is true. My concern is whether this is revenue, whether this is value for our city. We already approved a mixed use, as we showed. That mixed use was agreed to when this developer bought the land. So this is not something that was forced on the developer. They bought the land with this agreement in place. We allowed one or more than one adjustment to that PUD already for the mixed use that was shown prior. This specifically says this parcel is supposed to be a mixed-use development. I don't think two large boxes in an apartment counts as mixed use. So we're doing a pretty fundamental change to that. They may be able to speak to the jobs now that it's official who this was. But I did some research and two big boxes, I figure, are gonna employ about five hundred people. The original plan showed roughly eleven restaurants and eleven stores. When I did that research on the smaller, those employed about the same five hundred in one-third the space. So if we actually utilize this real estate, it would employ many more people than the large boxes, unfortunately. Specifically, I looked at the Claremont Walmart large box. For Claremont's tax base, the Walmart in Claremont generates one thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars per acre. The Outback Steakhouse, per acre in Claremont, generates for Claremont, four thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars per acre. Little Anthony's here in Meniala generates six thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars per acre for the Meniala tax base. So I am all for business. I am for business that helps the city grow. My concern is that large boxes generate money for Bentonville. They do not generate money for the local business. Small business is better than big business. Not only does a large box not generate tax base, it actually runs negative. Again, this is a hard number to look up, and I'm trying to watch my time. The, the math that I found is a Walmart and a Sam's Club combined will generate more than one police call per day. If you notice, Walmarts all have a substation in the lobby for the police department because of those calls. This is not a knock on Walmart. It is a knock on people that take advantage of large-box shopping that we need to protect. That is about eight to sixteen thousand dollars a year we have to pay. And I'm getting the hook. Thank you very much. I actually am not against Walmart themselves. They just don't generate money. Thank you.
And I want to say, before we move forward, thank you very much, Nathan, for your way of showing how the timer works and he's respecting everyone. So thank you very much, and that's a great example of how we need to do this. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
All right. Ed Stevens, two one six one Gold Dust Drive. Hey, one of the things I wanted to point out to my neighbors is that they pull up two Walmarts in probably the two of the most prestigious areas in central Florida. Lake Nona, which has a property tax of, Lake Nona, which has a property tax, I believe, of like one-point-eight-four or one-point-eight-five. And then Hamlin area has a property tax of like one-point-eight-four. Our property tax is much lower than that. If you do a three-mile radius of the Publix here, the average household income is eighty-eight thousand. If you do a three-mile radius of Hamlin, where that Walmart is, the median household income is a hundred-and-eight thousand. So the reality of this, if you do a three-mile radius of the Walmart right here in Claremont, it's seventy-four thousand. So if we were to give a crystal ball and look into the future, we need to look at the Walmart in Claremont, not a Walmart in Lake Nona and Hamlin. Another thing I'd like to point out is that the Walmart in Hamlin and Lake Nona is Orange County, but they didn't present a Walmart that's brought a lot of value to the community in Lake County. The difference is, the taxes is so much different. In our community, right now, we can't even get our council, no offense to you, to invest in a park that we have plenty of funding for. So in Hamlin and Lake Nona, the, the city really contributes a lot of money to that area to make sure that the taxpayers are getting what they deserve and what they're paying in taxes. And you can really feel it when you go into those communities. So when we moved out here, we were sold the Hamlin and the Lake Nona. What we're finding out is we're not getting the Hamlin and the Lake Nona. What we're getting is the Claremont. One last thing, I wanted to let you know, I sent an email to Robert, no offense to Robert, and I provided a whole bunch of case studies on the crime rates that Walmart generates. And there were several of them done. One of them was through the Haggard Law Firm. Another one was through Oxford University in England. And another one was done through the Harvard Kennedy School. And what it has shown, when Walmarts are really close to schools, the abduction rate, the child abuse rate, the rapes, the crimes, to the gentleman talked about, there's, there's a phone call generated like one an hour to the Walmarts because of the thefts. So go out and do your research. I know they're trying to clean, clean up their image, but there's a big difference between a Costco and a Walmart.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm a little shorter than the two previous speakers. I'm Cindy Owens. I'm resident, two eight one nine Purple Meadow Court up in Del Webb, Meniala. And I want to say good evening to the mayor and city council. I also want to take a moment and just thank you for holding this workshop and to Walmart in Santera for showing up and giving us useful information. I'm here not so much to oppose Walmart or even Sam's Club coming. I'm more concerned about the rapid urbanization that Meniala is experiencing. You guys have seen a forty-four percent population growth since 2020, and you're currently averaging a six percent rate of growth each year. Rapid growth in development can outpace the building of roads, bridges, public transportation, but more importantly, sanitation, your electrical grid, and water systems. As I said, I'm a resident in Del Webb, and my water pressure at my house is barely at the minimum needed to come out of that faucet. That means I take a very long shower because the water trickles out of my showerhead and washing dishes takes forever. So low pressure like this, you're like, what's the big deal? Well, think about your fire hydrants. In January of this year, in Los Angeles County in Pacific Palisades, they had a twenty-three-thousand-acre wildfire. It cost fifty-one-point-seven billion, yes, billion dollars worth of damage, and twelve people died. What was the issue? Well, believe it or not, their fire hydrants ran dry and they collapsed the water system. The high demand also caused water pressure issues. And the city officials themselves stated the urban water system wasn't designed for, for, I'm sorry, it wasn't designed for large fires, but for small fires. So here I am out in Del Webb going, this development and those people are gonna suck more water from that water system than what can adequately be provided for my safety at my house. I worked for another city in California, and the fire department responded to a fire and they pulled so hard on the fire hydrants, they collapsed the entire water system. Took them two weeks to get water back up and running to all those houses. So I implore you to actually take a look at infrastructure and making sure the infrastructure is in place, that you have public safety services in place, fire, medical, police, and that you don't ignore the transportation. I do want to say, we know rapid expansion will cause an increase in public services. That means an increased cost for your residents. In Winter Garden tonight, they're actually holding a public hearing on charging a three-hundred-dollar parcel fee to residents to pay for fire services. I don't know anybody here that wants to pay an additional three-hundred dollars a year to support fire services. So I implore our council to really take a look at this project and its benefits and to ensure that the infrastructure is in place and that we can financially support what is coming. Thank you.
Brian Bellew, one three nine four Alameda in Claremont. I am the HOA Board President for Espinade. My main concern is, and I'll, I'll tag along on our infrastructure, the roads itself. A Citrus Grove Road behind Espinade is not open across to Mount Verde yet. They're working on the ramp going over to the turnpike. When that opens, that opens the door for more traffic coming over from Mount Verde into that area. Cyrene at Meniala is in the process of being built. That is not even a quarter of the way built of the houses that are gonna be right behind Espinade. We have a back gate that goes out to the circle that takes us up to Publix. I can tell you that if you go along with this plan, there is, I will have to sit at that circle and wonder if I'm ever gonna get out. That's a two-lane highway. There is not a chance in, in God's green earth that the traffic coming over the ramp and the traffic from these two box stores will just, you know, tie the traffic up terribly in that area. And that's my main concern. I could, I could talk about the other things that she did, but please consider that two-lane highway will not handle the traffic. Thank you.
If I may, I'm sorry. Sir, can I get your first name again? Brian, thank you. I didn't hear that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Barry Sawyer, four six two Switchgrass Loop. My wife and I moved here from South Florida in December of 2023, and we like it very much. So we've lived where it's, it's an urbanized area and there are Walmarts, there are Sam's Clubs, et cetera, et cetera. My main concern is we have two young boys. My oldest is going to the Meniala Horizon Academy. The Walmart would be very nearby. From what I've seen, there's a ten to twenty percent increase in violent crime when there's a Walmart nearby. So aside from the revenue and all the other stuff, that's important. I understand we have to grow, there's urbanization, et cetera, et cetera. But what happens when crime goes up, just violent crime, there's more shoplifting, there's more larceny? My house, I can see the turnpike from my house, meaning that the Walmart or the Sam's Club would be nearby. I heard them talking about PricePoint with Walmart, et cetera, et cetera. I've been in sales for a very long time. PricePoint is not always the selling. There's a Walmart in Claremont, right? If I need to go to the Walmart, I go to the Walmart or I order things and I get it shipped to the house. I go to BJ's every week. It's perfectly fine. Another two-hundred dollars a year in savings is not gonna change my mind. I'm not opposed to Walmart. What I'm worried about is, from what I've seen, there's another ten to fifteen thousand, I think it's ten to fifteen thousand additional traffic trips per day. What that does is, that wears down the roads. So now, there's more traffic right there at the turnpike, the entrance, the exit on Hancock to the turnpike. There's more traffic going across, taking the kids to school. When I ride my bike or my wife and I walk around the community, there's always people riding bikes or always people walking. What happens when we have more fatalities, homicides from traffic, right? Everyone who's here, I would assume, lives in this community. They like it here, they work, they live. Walmart comes in, there's an issue for the small businesses as well, which provide the charm and the character to the city. So I'm not opposed to Walmart. What I'm worried about is what happens, especially, and no offense to anyone, you guys seem like nice people, but if you don't live here, you don't have to deal with it.
Hi, I'm Angelia. Angelia Wright, two two five three Mystic Maze Lane in Meniala. I don't like using the, do I have to?
Oh, okay.
We're good. So I actually am for this development. I think it's gonna do great things in the community. Everybody's looking negatively, but I think we should look positively. We don't have anything for Meniala. We don't have, we don't have no stores other than Publix. When hurricanes come, we don't have access to some of our items that we need. I shouldn't have to drive twenty minutes to Walmart or BJ's just to get a necessity. I have four children, one of them being a newborn.
Guys, with respect.
I shouldn't have, I shouldn't have to drive.
They can't hear you. That's what they're saying. Sorry.
I shouldn't have to drive twenty minutes to Walmart or BJ's just to get necessities for my children. Publix oftentimes doesn't have everything that I need. So having to take the trip to go drive twenty minutes with a newborn and three other children, it's an inconvenience. But I understand some of these people's frustrations, like crime, but it could happen anywhere. And the longer that this land just sits there, it's costing us money as well. It's costing them money as well. So it's the same situation's gonna happen with Skorman. Skorman has this property just sitting there. If Santera cannot get people to rent out their parcels, what makes you think Skorman is gonna be able to as well? And I think we just need to further along this infrastructure. We have all of these houses coming. Lenar is coming down Hancock past Del Webb. We have way too many homes and not enough necessities for us to even provide for our families. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So my name is Brittany Mills, and I literally live on the corner right there. If you look up on the top, it literally butts up to the apartment complex. So it's nine sixteen Vineyard Ridge Road in Parkview at the Hills. So when we're talking in terms of that back road, my two children, one of them having special needs, he's intellectually disabled, autism, ADHD, and language impaired. And then I also have a thirteen-year-old. They were playing in the backyard. Two teenagers decided to race down that road, hit the roundabout, and then spun into what that out parcel would be, and my camera caught it on tape. So that right there lets me know that I don't want any more traffic than what's already going to be there. So bringing two big box stores are gonna be horrible when it comes to that. As they're saying, the traffic is already horrible. When the turnpike shuts down, all the traffic hits in Hancock. Twenty-seven, you're gridlocked, you're going nowhere anyways. So they were talking in terms of parking spaces. It's not just going to be a concrete space. They have six hundred eighty parking spaces for Lot A, seven hundred thirty-seven for parking spaces Lot B, five hundred twenty-five for that apartment complex. That's one thousand nine hundred forty-two parking spaces. I don't care how many trees that you can plant. There's already trees there, which I love to look out in my backyard, and I'd rather not see four-story apartment complexes. They already told us that the apartment complex didn't want to be near the turnpike because it's loud, it's noisy. What are you gonna do when you have nothing but concrete buildings there and the majority of it is going to be concrete pavement? You're gonna hear the noise, you're gonna see it, and that's just not gonna make it any better. We're also talking in terms of, we don't even know how many parking spaces are gonna be for those out parcels, nor the gas station right there. The original plan brought that small-town feel that we all love about Meniala. We don't want to recreate Claremont. We want to make Meniala, Meniala. We don't wanna recreate Clermont, we wanna make Mineola, Mineola. When we're talking about the drive, I love how they spun the data. It's 13 miles round trip, that means that's 7.6 miles one way. So don't get it twisted, it's not 13 miles just to get there. So you have Costco at 7.6 miles, a Walmart at 5.6 miles, a BJ's at 5.8 miles, Target's four miles, there's three Publixes with literally in 3.7 miles. So I did a USDA from 2010, a rural population, their first place to go is 3.2 miles, their third closest is 6.2. So I'm sorry, you may not like Publix, but it's convenient at that moment. No offense to Walmart, I'm a huge Denver Broncos fan, if you know anything about them. Walmart's a part owner, by the way, so I'm not against them. We're also talking in terms of those apartments. That's gonna bring another 590-something people. So when they talk about 525 parking spaces, I looked at Mineola's ordinances and they say for every one-bedroom, you need 1 parking, 1.5 parking spaces. For a two-bedroom, you need two. For a visitor, you need to have .5. So that means they're bringing in 590 people, if that's a 1.7 average. So I don't know about you guys, but I don't know many one-bedroom apartments. Do you guys? No. So that right there lets you know that's gonna overpopulate and I'm done.
My name is Kelly, I live at 369 Switchgrass Loop and I'm a proud resident of Mineola. I'm here tonight because I feel betrayed by a developer who's walked away from the promise made to residents like me and by a process that now asks you to approve that betrayal through a planned unit development. Let's be very clear, a PUD is not right. It's a request for a special privilege to override the rules that your own zoning code was designed to uphold. You are under no obligation to approve this application, in fact, you have every reason to deny it. We bought into Mineola for its vision. A walkable mixed-use town center with restaurants, shops, and a cohesive plan. What's now being proposed is massive big-box stores, Walmart and Sam's Club. And I completely abandoned that vision. I'm not here because I inherently dislike the stores, I'm here because of what they bring. Big-box stores like Walmart are proven crime magnets. It's true that the majority of these crime, that the majority of this crime is shoplifting, which we can and will stress our local police department and cause all of us to pay more to prosecute offenders, but I'm more concerned about the increase in violent crime. A 2022 BMC Public Health Study reported that each additional Walmart-like supercenter was associated with two to three more violent crime incidents per 10,000 people. Conversely, that same study reported that farmer markets actually reduced violent crimes. We were promised a town center, something that could be transformed into a weekend farmer's market. And let's not pretend this brings economic benefit, we know the data. Big-box stores routinely wipe out local businesses within two to four-mile radius. They don't strengthen communities, they gut them. The promise of jobs is a talking point, not a solution, especially when those jobs replace small business livelihoods and bring traffic, trash, and loitering in return. This development would burden emergency services, overwhelm traffic corridors near schools and hospitals, and compromise the safety and character of the surrounding neighborhoods, neighborhoods that were sold under entirely different pretenses. And let's not forget, the city council already said no to big-box retailers. In 2022, Mayor Pat Kelly publicly rejected the idea, saying it wasn't in line with Mineola's long-term vision. That vision was right then and it still is. So I am asking you now, do not reward deception. Do not allow a developer to rewrite the rules mid-game simply to maximize profit. If you approve this PUD, you're telling every resident that zoning code means nothing, that promises can be broken, that developers can build whatever they want wherever they want. But if you deny this PUD, you send a much stronger message that Mineola honors its commitment, protects its neighborhoods, and values thoughtful, community-first growth over corporate shortcuts. You'll keep Mineola on the path to being the beautiful upscale community we were promised it would be. We are not against development, we're against reckless, oversized, dishonest development that puts profit ahead of people. Respect the zoning, enforce the vision, protect Mineola, and say no.
Before I leave the podium, did I have a couple minutes?
No, I'm sorry.
I ran out of time? I just had one question. Can you explain how this project complies with our comprehensive plan and long-term growth strategy?
Thank you. They'll answer that at the end. Thank you.
Jennifer Morris, 1064 Golden Don Loop. I just want to, can you hear me, Joe? You got it? I just want to address the fact that I had asked for, I think a week now, for these conceptual plans to be uploaded to the website, and they were just uploaded this morning. And it did not include all of the Walmart renderings, which I think that the city of Mineola needs to be held accountable and become transparent. The fact that we were given a 30-minute speech on how wonderful Walmart's gonna be and didn't provide any information to the residents ahead of time, but you can see that everyone came prepared anyway. So I do have a couple posts from Pat Kelly, the mayor, and it says, "Thank you for, Mineola residents, for your continuous feedback on how you would like to see our city grow. The main theme we heard was more mom and pop and/or specialty retailing. We cannot choose one brand over another, but we can limit size and we, limiting the square footage of footprints of retail buildings to 18,000 square feet within the city without a variance." We were sold that this variance or this ordinance would be 18,000 square feet buildings or less. We were told by the governor, or the governor, the mayor, at last night's city council, the developer for the Hills of Mineola shared that they visioned a town center, what a town center could look like, big-box retail, out parcel, and an apartment complex. Collectively, the city council shared that we felt this is not what our residents want. Furthermore, we informed them that recently the city passed an ordinance limiting retail businesses to less than 18,000 square feet. They took our feedback and agreed to go back to the drawing board." And that is a post from Pat Kelly, the mayor. So apparently, this developer has already come with this exact conceptual design, made up another conceptual design that was approved in 2023, but has decided to ask for variance and ask for nine times over the city ordinance of 18,000 square feet. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Nicole Marie, 879 High Point Circle. I would like to start with a rhetorical question for all of you to reflect on. Each person in this room is probably not from the city of Mineola originally, so I want you to think about where you left to move to the city of Mineola and the reasons why you left there. I'm sure it was overpopulation, I'm sure it was big-box stores, I'm sure there was a bunch of reasons, but if we do not act up now and speak together, then this place becomes the place that you left. So I wanna leave you, start you with that. So the other issues that we have here is I wanna start with talking about the Publix, because I know that that's a big one that everyone says is over variance, but Publix filled a direct need for our community. And it was the fact that the city of Mineola did not have a grocery store. So Publix filled the need of providing us with a grocery store, and after that was when the city of Mineola approved the ordinance for 18,000 square feet, okay? Because of the troubles and the community kickback that we got from Publix going in there. So now that we have this ordinance put in place, now everyone wants to come and ask for variance. Nine times over. One building is 160,000 square feet, the other building is proposed at 175,000 square feet. That is well over our 18,000 square feet. One of the arguments that I believe the Walmart lady brought up was that this would help in a hurricane, however, with its location right off of the turnpike. Please let me know what other cities are gonna be able to come onto the turnpike and go to Walmart to use the hurricane supplies. It's not going to be specifically for Mineola residents because of its location, so it's not going to benefit us in the ways that we are being told that it would. The other big thing that we need to consider here is the fact that there are other options. One of the options that has not been talked about at all, and this is a fun option, is the shipping container option. I love that you brought up Lake Nona, because Lake Nona did this exact same thing and they created a shipping container town center. It is one of their highest-brought businesses, they do farmer's markets, events there all the time, it benefits the community, there's so many different options that this can offer, as well as providing spaces at a reasonable amount for local businesses to come in. Another example of this here in Florida is Wesley Chapel, the Crate, K-R-A-T-E. They have 93 shipping containers. That means they have 93 local and small businesses, food vendors, and all of the places that a town center like Mineola would be able to hold. So I know that you said you called the fancy list of big-box retailers and none of them wanted to take that location, but there are small business owners here in the city of Mineola that would thrive on an opportunity like that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Taylor Norman and, sorry, we, I just moved to 422 Switchgrass Loop at Parkview. And we moved from Tulsa, Oklahoma, and it was much slower pace than Florida. And we moved due to my husband's job and the amount of stress to go from Tulsa to a big city like Orlando to figure out where I could raise my three young girls safely and not in the, not, basically not where I have Sam's and Walmart in my backyard. And to spend from Tulsa is much cheaper than to build a house here. So we're actually, we spent way more than we needed to, but to get a house in Orlando is crazy. And so for me to spend the crazy amount of money that I did to buy this house for a Sam's and a Walmart to me in my backyard is a lie. Like, I feel like I, sorry, I'm emotional, I did not come with facts, I came with emotion from a new resident of Mineola. And I feel like moving into a house where even with leadership that can't keep their promises, keep their, keep their whatever ordinances, they, it's a lie. And my girls are going to the new school. What is the response time for first responders to get to my neighborhood, to Parkview, or even to their school? Are we taking away first responders from our kids, from our neighborhoods, to go to the crime that Walmart will bring? These are things that are real. We are real. Like, these families that are spending a whole lot of money to live here, to have this American dream that if I wanted to go to Sam's and Walmart and save the extra 20 minutes, I'm gonna waste 20 minutes sitting in traffic to get to my house. So I don't care about the extra 20 minutes, I care about the safety of my kids, the safety of my family. I don't want big-box stores in our backyard. I'm sorry.
Denise Calderon, 814 Oxbow Road. I'm also from South Florida, born and raised. I watched that little town, country town, grow into what it is now. And that is our future. That's what we should be looking at when we do what we do here. Because what happened when it rained really bad? They were underwater. Is that really what we want? How many traffic studies have I read here that stated that our roads are gonna be or will be at capacity? And I believe it was Brian that said, "We can't expand them. Some of these roads are scenic roads, we can't expand it." So what's gonna happen when we add this extra traffic or extra, all these other developments that are coming in? Not to mention, I brought this up a while ago at council, the water restrictions that the city of Mineola's under, we've gotta watch a lot of things here. So I'm just bringing all that up. I am for adding businesses to Mineola, we absolutely need that. Do we need a gas station? Sure. Wa-wa, racetrack. What about what a lot of the residents wants? Trader Joe's, if we can get that. We need to listen to what we can do or try to do, but I don't think it's box stores, I'm sorry, but I'd love to see other small businesses. Thank you.
Hi, Chuck Sizmar, 851 Box Elder. Let me just quick sign in. 851 Box Elder. I waited to the, kind of the tail end of the session here, because I don't wanna say anything repetitive. I don't wanna come in and say, "Well, you've heard that three times before," et cetera. But there's a couple of things that came to mind that I haven't heard before. The first one is, going back to the start of the presentation, we were talking about 70-plus acres, and we've gotta do this and we've gotta do that, and certain players didn't wanna come in because it's that big size. And I'm saying to myself, "Well, why doesn't he tell us why we gotta use all 70 acres? Why not leave some of these beautiful trees up? So we don't end up with a, what was the number, 1,200 parking spaces with a couple of saplings in the ground?" You know, give us what we want. If you can't, if no one wants to buy in, don't build, just leave the trees alone. It sounds to me, it sounds to me like you're reacting to what a developer, nothing personal, comes and says, "This is what we wanna do. We think this is better for Mineola." Okay? Instead of you people, our elected representatives, asking us what we want and try to give that, that quaint approach. If you can't do that, don't do anything.
This is why we do these workshops.
Well, okay, excellent. Another point, the examples that were thrown around, big-box stores are on 50, you're on 429, you're on 27. Think of the traffic on those three roads. They're not on Hancock, are they? They're not on Hancock. That, you want Hancock to become like 50? Like 27? 429? And it's great for, it's great for the box stores in and out, and that's great for them, but we live here. And the final point is, i-if you look at the map up there and you look at the roadways, where are people coming from? We've already heard from individuals that say the traffic is so bad and they're building that new bridge on, what is it, Fosgate or whatever it's called? Boy, that's gonna be a real jam, but then you look at the map and you say, "Well, how do I get to these stores?" It's kinda like one way in, one way out, isn't it? You ever been to a Buc-E's? Ever been to a Buc-E's? Try to get into a Buc-E's. Just try to get into a park. And then the last point, wait, five seconds, is everyone's gonna be on the turnpike stopping off at this place. Not us. Not us. It's people passing by. And I don't think that's what the citizens want. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Danishman at 904 Palm Forest Lane. I am very against having big-box stores, because again, when we moved here, we were kind of sold on the whole, you know, playground with the possible splash pad, with the farmer's market. And I mean, we're not far from Clermont Farmer's Market, but we want something in our community. We did come from Southern California and we have seen cities get ruined by just letting a big-box store into a space like this. So it's part of the reason why we chose Mineola over Lake Nona when we were buying and over, you know, Winter Garden, over other areas, because we wanted something small, not something big to grow our family in. We wanted that small-town feel, which I feel like most of us came here for that small-town feel. And that's all.
Hello, I'm Josh Eager, 2045 Axel Street. I as well don't wanna be repetitive, but a big thing for me is, we're spending a lot of money on, one thing I like about Lake County is the trail system. As we've expanded roads, we're constantly putting in new trails. I know we're spending a lot of money to build some tunnels or potentially bridges, and I think there's gonna be a tunnel eventually from the Dreamfinders area down this way. Well, anyways, my point is, for me, you know, living here, I'm really looking for, from developers, as something walkable, and I'm not so much as opposed to this specifically being a Walmart, but more so, I've never been to a Walmart that you would want to bike or walk to. I've done it before, but, I mean, the parking lots are massive, there's no, there's no walkways. When I saw some of the designs for the other development, with the Crooked Can, you know, it seems like they're taking care to put in a lot of- know, it seems like they're taking care to put in a lot of, it looks very walkable, very rideable. So for us, and for me specifically, I mean, I know this is supposed to be like a workshop, and I wish what we would see more from developers is like an A-B-C, you know, 'cause you come in with this, I, I think everyone's gonna be pretty opposed, or most people, 'cause it's, it's just cement, it's so much. I think if we had like a, you know, "This is what we could do," or "Option B" would be a little smaller, maybe not a Sam's Club, we could get some more discourse on, you know, maybe more people do want a Walmart. I'm not one of them, but, my point is, it feels like we can't have a meaningful conversation. The last few workshops, it feels like it's just everybody saying, "I don't want this," which is, I think, important as a community, but I would love to see more conversations on what do we want. And I understand from a developer perspective, citizens don't always, like, speak with their wallet very well. I know we want certain things, but economically, they might not make sense. These businesses don't wanna come here for A-B-C. But I also think, you know, early on, it was mentioned about, you know, it was difficult to get tenants in the original design, and Walmart being like an anchor would help with that, but I think it's just early, and we could wait, and you would have other opportunities once the hospital's done and Crooked Can and everything, you know? So anyways, my last two cents is just, I would love to see something much more walkable, more green space, something I could ride my bike to, you know, from the hills of Mineola. And I think what that would probably look like is just, is just waiting a little bit, letting some of the other developments come up, be those anchors, you know? Hospital's gonna bring a lot of jobs, a lot of people looking for more restaurants, and Crooked Can's the same. Thank you.
Hi, Megan Phillips from 1,004 Vineyard Ridge Road at Parkview. My biggest concern, I lived in Lake Nona before Walmart was built, before Sam's Club was built. We lived there for many years. We moved, I'm trying to think, 2019. And when it was built, it was beautiful. Everything was great, everybody liked it, we enjoyed going there. I was a member of Sam's Club, and slowly over the years, it declined. There was cr, uh, lots of theft, there was lots of crime. The store was dirty, the parking lot was dirty. To this day, I still go back, we have many friends there, my daughter was born down, like, down that way, we go to the hospital there. And I don't think that the development was around Walmart whatsoever. There was the hospitals being built, the Moore's was growing, there was a, what is it, the golf, not golf, the tennis academy or whatever it is that's down there. All this came into Lake Nona that had nothing to do with Walmart or Sam's. And my biggest concern, I guess if it's built, is the upkeep, because it didn't happen in Lake Nona. It's not there, it's dirty. I mean, I don't, even the one down in Hamlin, y'all can drive down there, it's okay, but it's still dirty. It's still not kept up to what I would want in my community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Cryer, 1128 Lake Viewox Drive. So I've lived here, I guess I kinda have a question for all of you guys, first of all. Do any of you guys live in Mineola? Anybody on the board here?
Do we live in Mineola?
Okay, I just wanted, just wanted to make sure. Okay. So, when my wife and I, or when I moved to Orlando in 2000, when you come from Ocala and you're driving to Orlando, you're going down the turnpike and all of a sudden you get to these hills, and you see all of these really beautiful hills, and it's like in the middle of, in all of this flatland, most of, you know, Florida is flat. And you get to these beautiful hills and you're like, "Wow, that's really a nice area." And then I lived in Orlando for a long time, moved out here in about, probably about 2003. And it, it just seems like it would be a shame for such a beautiful area to put just box stores right there along the turnpike. It kinda gives it a, kind of a black eye for, for such a beautiful area. And I understand the folks from Walmart and the developers, I understand for you guys, it's all financial, but for us that live here, it's not financial. We moved here for a reason. It's a beautiful area. This area deserves to be upscale. It doesn't deserve to be rundown like a, certain areas of Kissimmee or certain areas of Claremont. This is a really beautiful area. I had a few other things that I wanted to say, and really, just to wrap up what I wanted to say, actually, is just, from what you can hear from all of these people, it seem, seems like it's the general consensus that nobody wants these big box stores here. So I, I just implore you to please listen to the residents here and, and listen to what they say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Louis Santiago. I live in 1904 Archer Drive. And for anyone who doesn't know, I live, I've been looking at apartments, 'cause I now live at the Serene at Mineola. We moved here from Hamlin. We spent four years at Hamlin, and yes, Walmart was beautiful. We left Hamlin. Prior to leaving Hamlin, we were like, "Wow, look at this poor unfortunate soul who is less fortunate than everyone probably that's here shaving on the sidewalk. This is what's going to be brought to this community." We come from out of state. We go back to our state now. We have to call somebody to unlock a cabinet so we can buy toothpaste, get toothbrush. That's what's going to happen. We drive Citrus Grove Road every day. I can't imagine the trucks going through there, right? How often the trucks are gonna go through there? What time they arrive to make their deliveries? What hours? What noise that brings? Right? There's trucks gonna be idling in the parking lot. We see it now in Hamlin. We have truck drivers that park there, and while Walmart may have a no parking overnight policy, we still saw it. It's going to happen. We moved to Mineola for how beautiful it is, and thank you. This community is amazing. My wife and I, we love it. She took me to Hamlin for four years because she wanted to see Disney. I didn't like to hear the booms, but guess what? Where we live, we see the fireworks. She's happy, I'm happy. All right? So we would like to stay that way. We have two young children who are so happy being in this community at the age of eight and 11. We were very concerned about their well-being and how they thought this move was gonna impact them. And to hear them say every day, "We love it here," is amazing. Now we gotta take an extra step if this gets approved, to be extra careful and restrict their movement. That's a problem. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, everybody. My name is Lucas Mover-Madis. I'm at 2226 Keystone Pass Boulevard, just across the turnpike over there. Maybe one point that we haven't discussed yet or considered is what kind of adjacent retail Walmart and Sam's Club would attract. We discussed the case study of Hamlin, where you have a Walmart there, but you have a lot of nice boutique restaurants, a lot of local businesses there. So I'd be very curious to see what Sunterra or the city is thinking in terms of how do we make sure that if we do bring a Sam's Club, if we do bring a Walmart, that we can regulate some of the other adjacent businesses that are there to make sure that those are local and those are focused on things that are meeting some of the other needs of the community. I came from Powder Spring, Georgia, I moved down here about two years ago. I was there before and after they built a Walmart within a mile of my home. After they built a Walmart, within two to three years, we had, in that same vicinity, a pawn shop, a smoke and vape shop, payday advance shop, Dollar Tree and Dollar General. So we have to be, nothing against these businesses, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, we're gonna bring these two big boxes, who do tend to attract a lot of these other adjacent retail. We just wanna make sure we're being selective about who else is going to be there and what kind of business that's going to attract. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, I'll keep this quick, 'cause I know we've had a lot of questions and points brought up. I'm Erin Hayes, 2396 Juniper Berry Drive. One thing I was thinking of with this area, and again, I think we kinda feel like it was a bait and switch, which I know when we were going through our purchase of our home, it was a very different plan, but I know, as you've mentioned, the economics, sometimes it can't always work out that way, so I understand that part, but I think something I thought of is, okay, if we, you know, this plan is approved, we'll have big box just in this area. A point was brought up that over near Crooked Can, well, then we can have smaller spaces over there and mixed use. I think maybe just take caution here that this could set a precedent that, let's do big box over here, and maybe that kind of spills into the rest of Mineola as well. Well, if they had big box over here, what's to stop us from doing it near Crooked Can or some of these other areas? So I think just kinda think about that part as well, that it seems like a lot of us are in agreement with this kind of smaller feel and that vision, but if this goes ahead and now it's just a big box, what's to stop the rest of the area from becoming that as well? So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, actually, it's really, if council, council, you want applicants to speak, or you guys wanna speak first?
I think we should speak first.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, that's great. Thank you, everyone. I'm gonna start with, uh, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I'm gonna start with Eric Hernandez. We're gonna have council speak. After council speaks, then we're gonna have the applicants go ahead and answer these questions that they've taken down for you. After they have answered those questions, if anybody, that is with no objections to the applicants, if after the meeting, any questions for the applicants, hopefully they can stick around. Eric Hernandez?
Thank you. Couple of questions, more geared towards the Walmart and Sam's Club folks. So Walmart, based on my research, does actually have a policy where they allow trailers and RVs to park overnight in its lots. Mineola does not allow overnight parking. How will Walmart curtail this, if possible? Would this Walmart location hire off-duty police officers to make sure policy is managed correctly? We are currently having this issue with Publix with tractor trailers and campers right there on Hancock as well. All right, you guys wanna answer? I'll answer all my questions, then you guys can, could respond to it. We're gonna have the same fairness as the audience. While Walmart itself may or may not lower property values, depending on what studies you read, retail theft certainly does. With Walmart having a laissez-faire approach when it comes to shoplifting as per social media, how will this location change this approach in order to avoid shoplifting and the compounding effects this brings to housing, housing neighborhoods around town? I.e., if somebody wants to shoplift in Walmart and they see the houses in the surrounding area, what will stop them from also going to those cars and houses? With Walmart having, with Walmart having a massive inventory, Shirley delivery trucks are a huge part of its success. Given the proximity to houses and neighborhoods, how will Walmart curtail traffic with tractor trailers and deliveries? Being close to the turnpike, I'm assuming Walmart will have to advertise to turnpike traffic. Mineola has a very strict signage code. If this project continues to move forward, how will Walmart manage the code structure Mineola has in place when it comes to signage? Will additional variances be required to allow the front of stores to have the signage lit, also the blue wall, yellow star, et cetera? Excuse me. Will having the same storefront as that of Hilton Head Island be feasible to do in this location? And finally, the nearest housing structure to this Walmart location, from the end of the, of the house property to the edge of the building where Walmart's supposed to be, based on the site plan, is approximately 1,500 feet. How will Walmart slash Sam Clubs limit noise pollution, night pollution to this particular house? Please note, the resident is in the audience, and she is, in fact, my neighbor as well. Thank you.
Well, it's been deep, been thorough. I think most of the people have covered pretty much what I could say, but I'd just like to add a little bit and to tell you my perspective. I've shopped at Walmart every week for 35 years. That doesn't mean I love Walmart. It means I have to shop someplace. And I know a lot of the people here are saying, "Why are you gonna bring all this traffic?" Well, you haven't seen anything yet, because there's a lot more coming. There's a lot more developments where people are gonna live, there's a lot more business, a lot more commercial, so Mineola's gonna keep growing. One thing that council can't do is stop our growth. When I moved here 23 years ago, there were only 2,500 people in Mineola. I came here because I could smell orange trees, I could drive up and down 27 on a two-lane highway. And this is the third time this has happened to me in my life. No matter where I go, people seem to go to the same place. I spent 40 years coming to Florida on vacation. When I first came here, I really loved it. I've looked all over Florida for a place to live over those 40 years, including Orlando, all the way up the Palm Coast, all the way down the Naples, all the way over to Miami, which, by the way, when I got to Miami, I left within 20 minutes. And I hear that some of the people here have also left Miami in 20 minutes.
And Eric's one of them.
And I've been all the way to Tallahassee, so I've been all over Florida, and I know there are parts of Florida where it's not growing, but central Florida is. This is a prime area. And for the same reason you wanted to come here, other people wanna come here. Okay? When we get three times the number of people here, and they're coming, we're gonna need a place to buy groceries. Long came the need for a grocery store 23 years ago, and what most of the people in the city said is, "We don't need a grocery store." This is before most of, some of the people here. Pam Service, she was here then, but when Dixie wanted to build a grocery store in Mineola, and Mineola wouldn't support it, and the people in Mineola came out in droves, as you're here tonight, so we didn't get a grocery store, and it was gonna be right here on the other side of this, 561. However, people need to buy groceries, and we wanted a grocery store. Sunterra was good enough to find Publix, and they wanted to build a grocery store in And we said, "If you're gonna build a grocery store in Mineola, it has to be above average, it has to be a better grocery store." To that end, the Publix here is a shining example of a good Publix. If you remember the last time you were in there, all the fixtures are stainless steel. We had to convince them of that. All the floors are terrazzo. That was a big expense for them to add it. So there were things we could do to make a better Publix. The parking lot, and I can remember somebody right next to me saying, "You better improve the parking, because we don't want what usually you get." And they have better parking, car returns are pretty good. I don't go to that store, because I'm closer to the store up here in Claremont. But I do go there once in a while, and I think it's a jewel. And what we look for in Mineola is to have jewels. We took a long time to build the best fire station we could get. We want another fire station up by where most people who moved to Mineola live, and we got a temporary fire station up on the other, up in Mount, Ferndale, excuse me. So we are very conscious about safety, very conscious. We care about the people who live here. We don't get elected by developers, we don't get elected by, by store builders, we don't get elected by business. We get elected by the people of Mineola. We're here to represent you. We're gonna try and do the best thing for you. But remember, you need a place to buy groceries, you need a place to buy things. As Mr. German said, "When you go to a Walmart, it's like going to 20 stores under one roof." Is that important? To some people, yes, to some people, no. Okay, so I'm gonna, let me, I'm not asking for a response, but if you want a response, go ahead. Every week, I go to Walmart to buy my stuff. It's not the only store I go to, but every week I mix in with the crowds. I go to shop on groceries on Wednesday, because that's the best day that Walmart has to shop. It's the least crowded of all the days. Saturdays and Sundays are the most crowded. I don't shop at Walmart on Saturday or Sunday. Okay? But the point is, the point is, I need to buy my groceries someplace. Typically, in, across the United States, most people live within 10 miles of Walmart. I don't mind living within 10 miles of Walmart. I don't mind living within 10 miles of Walmart. If I want to go to Walmart, I'll drive 10 miles. So it doesn't have to be here. But I'm representing a lot of people in Mineola. 17,000 people, not the 100 people that are here. We have to be mindful of that when making decisions. Some people don't like the decisions we make, and we feel bad about that, but the fact is, we have to decide what's best for the city.
Excuse me, if we could please be respectful of everybody's time. I know we're respectful for yours. These are all our opinions. If you guys have any questions, after them, you could ask us individually. Thank you.
We're not limited by the three-minute rule. Sorry, but we make the rules. So, if I may, there's a lot of pluses and minuses about big-box stores. Okay? We understand that. The reason we made the city code that 18,000 square feet was the limit was so that to go over 18,000 square feet, we would have to pass an exception. We did that so we could protect what came to the city of Mineola. Protect it for the people who live here. We could very easily say, "No, you can't build a big-box store in Mineola." Okay? But if you think about it, where the crooked can is, none of that is all commercial along the turnpike. So buildings are gonna come, and a lot of people, when we talked about that development, which is Richland Properties... Mineola Ridge. Sorry, I forgot the name, but... So, a lot of people from the hills said, "We don't want to see big stores." Well, those stores are probably gonna come, and they're big. So, what am I trying to say? The 100 people and the two people that were for Walmart are here tonight, and the other 945 people are against it. And we hear that. We hear that. I'm sorry. I'm not gonna get in a debate with anybody. I'm sorry, I'm not gonna get in a debate with you. That's the end of that debate. So the point is, the point is, I represent you. I don't, I don't vote for whether we have a Walmart or not because I shop there. As I said, I can drive 10 miles if I want to to go to a Walmart. I'm retired. I've been retired for 25 years. Okay? So, we'll take in consideration what's best for the city and hopefully make the right decisions. However, we can't tell... We can't tell what stores to come here. We can't say, "Target, we want you to come here." No, we can't. We can ask. We can ask. Again, we're doing a give-and-take here, and that's not the purpose of my talking right now. We can't force stores to come here. We can't pick who's gonna want to come here. Okay? So the options are, this land could be a Walmart, it could be nothing, it could just stay fallow like it is. But one thing you can't have is the city buy the land because we can't afford to buy it. It's more money than we could afford to buy. Okay? Or develop. We're not in the developing business. Okay? So bear in mind that we're gonna try and do the best thing for the residents of the city, and that's the end of my spiel.
Sorry, guys. I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. I hear all of you. I wrote everything down, every person that came up there. And if it was up to me, I would love a Trader Joe's. If it was up to me, I would love, and I've said it, Mark knows for many, many years, a Buc-Ee's. But again, that's just up to me, and I'm one of five. And that's it. Thank you.
Does, you guys want to answer questions?
Hey, guys, please keep it constructive. I can guarantee you, the folks up here, the city council members, they really care deeply about the city. They work really hard at it, at what they do, so please be respectful. And they're one of y'all. They live here too, and so they're impacted by all the same decisions, okay? All right, the developer now is gonna answer all y'all's questions.
Thank you all. Let me, let me start by saying, we greatly appreciate everybody's time. I think, as the vice mayor mentioned, we've been taking meticulous notes as well to understand all of your comments and do everything we can, so... We... Richard in particular, but in myself, we've been, although we don't live here, we've been involved with the city for a long time. We care deeply what happens here. We want to do what's best for the city. I know that doesn't translate sometimes, and it, we can't make everybody happy, and unfortunately, we would love to, but unfortunately, that's not the reality sometimes. So let me address some of the comments. I mean, I know a lot of it was kind of similar, so we'll go through some of the lists, and I'm sure others may have some talking points and answers to the questions, but what I can assure you of is, we are going to take your feedback. We're gonna regroup, discuss what we can do. This has been, the purpose of this is to hear it, as was discussed at the beginning. There's no, there's no vote. There's no bait and switch intended. We're not trying to deceive people. This is part of the process of trying to change things and go through, and we have this public forum, and if anything were to move forward, there would be more public hearings that would occur in order for a vote to actually take place, so... I, I'll start going through some of the lists, and as I mentioned, some others may have some comments as well. Let me just, I just get the, you know, the elephant in the room. Okay, we're, yes, we're a developer. We obviously don't do this for free or for no reason, right? So the idea is, yes, we would try to make a profit. I can assure you, though, that this is not the easy way out of making money. The most profitable thing for us would be to build, I don't know how many we could fit, 60 restaurants here. That would be the most profitable thing we could do. But guess what? Nothing would ever happen. You'd be lucky to get the out parcels that we're showing there along Citrus Grove Road, and I don't know what users would be there, and I don't know which ones would make it succeed or fail. But the idea of, and I think Nate brought it up, as far as, you know, taxes and what benefit it brings, we get it, and that's why we have these out parcels. They're, you know, per acre, they may bring in more, but you may not get them, and you're not gonna get, you know, 50 restaurants placed on this, right? It's, it's not feasible. I think the Italian place was brought up. Well, that location is right off of 27, right? It's not, you know, 500 feet past 27. So the, the idea of what we want to do, and we would love, we would have loved to have done the town center concept, that village center. Look, that's not something that we wouldn't want to do. We tried to do it. We would love to do it. We understand everybody's sentiment about it. I think it was brought up about Hill City Center and other things. We don't know what's gonna happen. The point of, I guess I was a little discouraged about the comment of, you know, turning Mineola into Clermont. That was kind of the point of the presentation and the case studies. We don't think that Mineola is Clermont. That's not what we think we're replicating here. That's not what we're trying to replicate. The idea is, is that, you know, going back to, you know, this slide here, there, there is a lot coming. And I think that gets into a whole nother discussion that's going in with traffic. It's, it's a tough answer, and I can address some of it, but the reality, and I think Commissioner Saunders was, or council member Saunders was bringing it up, this has been designed for this, right? That we're not, we are seeking some changes to that PUD to allow certain things, but this was always designed for, you know, 76 acres of, of commercial and multifamily and these uses. There's a lot more coming, and I think some of it as far as the traffic and getting off of the turnpike is partly because of the expansion that's happening to the turnpike and the construction that's going on, and there's probably more shutdowns than usual because of it. On the north side, there are improvements that are occurring to Hancock. Hancock will get four-laned up there. And then for what we're doing along Citrus Grove Road, there are improvements that we would have to make. And we have talked to, so everybody knows, Citrus Grove Road is, and Hancock for that matter, are both Lake County-owned roads. So we have met with Lake County to understand what those traffic implications would be. We didn't get into too many details about it because it's preliminary right now. We understand we're gonna have to work through that, but there would be improvements that would occur to the existing roundabout that are there. There would be basically dedicated entrance lanes that go into the development, dedicated exit lane that came out, as well as changing the intersection that it currently exists, going back to the site plan. So, this intersection here, there would be improvements basically along this area that would have to be done to the existing road to help handle that traffic, monitor that traffic flow, including a potential light that would end up going into that, to that intersection. So, you know, we can't sit here and argue that we don't understand that traffic and transportation issues don't exist. We acknowledge that. We're going to do everything we can in this area to, whatever we build here, to make sure that that's reflected. But there is a, you know, there was an interchange built here. I think that was part of the discussion as far as what's coming there. The idea is that there should be stuff coming, and I think it got brought up, as far as for the residents' benefit, to have areas to shop, places to go, these, these items to come, and right now, there hasn't been much. Hopefully, we're on the precipice of it. What we're proposing, we think, is going to help that. We hear all the concerns. I think one of the other things that came up was restrictions. I can assure you that actually Walmart takes it very, very seriously as far as what they want or don't want in front of their stores and those out parcels, so a lot of those uses that were mentioned, whoever the gentleman was that mentioned that, I can assure you, there would be use restrictions. Part of our process would be to have a POA declaration that would limit some of the uses as far as what could go in and what could not go in. Let me see, what else am I missing here? Yeah, so, so safety is, it's, that's, it's a tricky one because I know, and we've seen it, you can, you can Google some statistics, and the reality is, is that obviously there are more incidents whenever there are more people and places to go. So, no, it is true. No, it is true. It's, it's...
Sir. Sir, I apologize.
We, we, we can, we can debate about which, which users are gonna bring more or not, but the reality is, the more people that are coming to a place, the more likelihood that there's going to be an incident that the police have to get called. So I don't think anybody is denying that or arguing that fact. I think, you know, Walmart may be able to talk to some of it. They do a lot of measures for security and safety, from lighting and other things. I'll let you guys talk about what you can. But, but the reality is, if you start putting things in places, right now, there's, there's obviously, there's no crime at that location because there's nothing there. And I'm not arguing the fact that Walmart or not. I'm just saying, if you start building stuff, you know, there was no crime when there were no neighborhoods here, but you put neighborhoods and people, it starts to increase. I, I get it. Richard, anything else you want to do, address? Do you guys have any? Hold on. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, so there were just a couple of questions that I wanted to answer that I'm sure they'll, you'll answer those. I think a lot of these folks want to hear the answer to that as well. I could repeat them if you'd like as well.
Yeah, it was around the trailers and...
Yeah, the first one, I don't need my microphone. The first one was regarding the RV and the trailers. Walmart currently has a policy. Did you allow that? Being that this location would be a very transient place to Disney, Universal, etc., how will you curtail this possible? And will Walmart hire off-duty police officers on your dime in order to police that?
Yep. So absolutely, on the, on the topic of trailers, we do not allow trailers to be parked on our parking lot.
Travel trailers.
Travel trailers.
Yes, and RVs.
So we allow those to park to shop, but not to stage overnight.
So, excuse me, excuse me, folks, hold on, hold on. I'm with you. I asked, I asked a question.
Yeah.
Give me a second. So, excuse me, excuse me. According to your policy that I read online, I can show you the reference, it does state that you guys do allow that because you state that RV trailers are part of your own, so you do allow transient for them to stay overnight. In fact, some locations even have hookups for them to, to hook up to. So the question is, how will you be able to stop that? If, and you may not, and that's okay. That's, that's perfectly fine answer. Is it possible to stop that? And if so, how are you going to police it with, with off-duty police officers or with security?
Okay. So in terms of off-duty security officers, we do, in locations where it's needed, we do hire off-duty police officers, and we do pay...
Sorry, sorry, and I, we have to be very careful here.
Yeah.
So, I think you skipped over the RV trailer part.
Yeah. So that's, I'm gonna go back to that. So I'm gonna talk about that, right? So there's, there's two things that we do to help with, whether it's traffic on our parking lot, RV trailers, other trailers. So our management team is well-versed on those things, so they will address it if there is concerns. Another thing is like, there's also city ordinances, so if there's a city ordinance that doesn't allow it, we also make sure we enforce it through our security teams in our stores, along with if we do have off-duty officers, if the location requires off-duty officers.
So, I'm sorry. This can be very back and forth.
No, it's fine.
Hope that's okay.
I get it.
So you said, if you do get off-duty police officers. Hypothetically, let's say you come to council for a vote, I can assure you that one of the stipulations will be that you will have to have off-duty officers. Is that something that Walmart is okay with?
Absolutely. We've, wherever the need, wherever stores require it, we've always been aligned with the community. I think a second part of it is the trailer deliveries. I'll tell you, I've worked in several locations, and we have noise ordinances in locations where communities have homes close to the Walmart. So we do have a noise ordinance where we doesn't allow deliveries during certain times. So usually, we look to say around 9:10 o'clock to 7:00, 8:00 in the morning, we wouldn't allow even our Walmart trailers to do deliveries during that time to reduce the amount of noise getting into the communities.
So, that being said, as Joe mentioned, I'm originally from South Florida, Miami, where there are plenty of Walmart locations in very dense areas. There were times around the clock where those Walmart trucks would go in, specifically the stores in Doral and Kendall, Miami Gardens. I would see those, those cars, or I'm sorry, those tractor trailers going at all times. So even though you may say you have noise ordinances prohibit that, how will this store in particular be able to stop that? And if they do not stop that, and let's say they continue to go during those non-off hours, what is the stipulation that they will stop that during that time?
So we have close contact with, obviously, our delivery partners, whether it's directly Walmart or suppliers or suppliers, that we would then redirect to them to make sure we course correct to understand the expectation of deliveries. Obviously, some stores, I will tell you, do not have noise ordinances, but the cities that do have that, we course correct it if we see the behaviors does change.
Okay. And speaking on tractor trailers, as you can see on the site plan here, I don't see any through streets for tractor trailers except through Citrus Grove and through the main entrance. So from my perspective, mind you, I live in Parkview. For full disclosure, I live in Parkview. You probably can see my house on the drawings there. So how will the tractor trailers plus residents living in Cyrene plus Publix guests be able to traverse through Citrus Grove? Not to mention that that roundabout is gonna be pretty challenging for an 18-wheeler to get through. I think I have more questions for you guys.
And I can, I can help answer that. We have our engineers too, and we've, we've carefully, like, we're, we're real, as Dan said, we are redesigning the roundabout to have dedicated lanes that go straight into... to have dedicated lanes that go straight into the Walmart. And then, I think the truck path is basically the ring road that goes all the way around for Sam's and Walmart. And I believe it's designed, I think there's heavy-duty asphalt, correct me if I'm wrong, on both entrances, right? So, it's going to be a left-in by where you see the, the Sam's and Walmart fuel closest to Hancock. So, trucks can pull in there and then if it's going to Sam's, they'll go left. If it's, if they're going to Walmart, they'll go right and go all the way around and on heavy-duty asphalt. And then...
Sorry, just to take on that topic, so would that be a signal being put there next to the Publix entrance?
I think it's a planned, I don't want to speak out of turn. The, where the, where the fuel is that leads into the fuel? Here, Dan, I'll let you, just so I don't misspeak. Did I say anything if I said anything incorrectly?
No, you're right. Yeah, I think the preliminary discussions with Lake County have been to make this a restricted access. So, left, left-in, left-in, there would not be left-outs that would be allowed. And then there would be a light to control traffic there.
So, there will be a light. So, if I'm leaving Publix and I want to go left on Citrus Grove, I will have to queue up in that light, which there's not a lot of asphalt between that light and the AT&T store. So, with there being a light, you're saying that there could potentially be a large queue going into and overflowing into the Publix parking?
I didn't understand that last part, sorry.
Can I see the question?
Yep.
Thank you. No, explain how I'm wrong.
So, I didn't, so did you understand? I didn't understand.
Right, yeah. So, Brittany, so you're, I'm referring to this one here? I think you're referring to, to this one here.
Explain what you want to again, Eric.
But either way, I've, I've got that question and that concern on your end. And I hope somebody does here with, for the applicant to, you know, comment on that. So, I'll give them the chance to do that. I hear you loud and clear.
And, and Brittany, that's one of my questions as well that we want. So, going back to this intersection right here, this is the AT&T store right here, right? Right now, for cars to leave Publix, you have to make a left on Hancock. Since there's no left-out out of this current shopping center, you have to make a left here and you have to wait at the light. If this is a light here with a signal and this is going to be red, that means cars are going to start queuing up along this road. Which as you can see, it's not a big distance. There's not a lot of asphalt here in order to allow cars to queue up to make that left. So, that's going to create a backup of traffic into the actual...
No.
No, okay.
Can I explain?
Sure, absolutely.
All right. The, the answer, Commissioner, is that, where's my light? Where is it? The answer is that this will be a through lane, okay? This light will only control left-in here. All right? So, this is still a through lane, so nothing happens there, okay? But however, it will change based on what the county's desires is. There'll be no left-out of Publix here. You'll have to go right down to the roundabout and out that way if... I, I'm just telling you what the county requested. Or, or go to Hancock out the front and go any way you want that way.
So, so just to confirm, this, this is not, hold on, this is not a developer request? This is a county request for this? Okay, so this is a county, okay. Uh, the next question I had again for, for the Sam's and Walmart folks. So, of course, signage is huge for Walmart. Everybody knows the, the gold star. You know, and the, it used to be a happy face, I think you guys had before. That draws people into Walmart. Mineola has a very strict signage. In fact, even with the storage unit, I fought very hard to not get it lit. In fact, Brittany was one of the biggest advocates and I get it lit. So, I fight really hard to make sure that signage does go with our code. With Walmart coming in at Sam's Club, is that something where you would require another variance in order to get these lit?
Yeah, absolutely.
The signage that we have designed is exactly what you guys already approved for Skorman's Development to the north. Okay, for what their turnpike signage would consist of and what their entry and all that signage is. So, we, we looked at his approval and we basically matched his approval.
Thank you. But would that, does not match Mineola code though. It matches his because we allowed it there, but it doesn't, again, just full disclosure, right? It does not currently match Mineola's code. So, taking that project aside, the question still becomes, will Walmart require variance in order to have the lit signs, the big blue wall in the front that says Walmart with the gold circle? Or will you be able to have that storefront look more like the Hilton Head Island location, which is all built in into the actual community of Hilton Head Island?
And then after that, if we can answer the questions from the audience right after.
I have one more.
So, I, I don't know the Hilton Head. I think we based it, we worked with our architect to show the signage. We will work with you. I mean, we do have our, it's called the spark, not the star, but we have the blue spark and that, that is our branding. But we will work with you to, again, we want to be part of the community. We want to be, yeah.
So, for, I, I know it's very small, so I apologize. You can see here, this is the Hilton Head Island, very small branding. It does show Walmart, has a spark. You didn't make it correct me on that. But this is very different than what was originally proposed. So, is this something where again, if this project was to move forward, Joe, I want to see that.
I don't think that's a supercenter.
So, this is going to be a supercenter?
Yes.
Okay. But the question's still, this is still asked. Is this something where you guys are willing to meet Mineola code with? Or will you ask, be asking for additional variances to have your branding as it is?
Potentially, I mean, we do want our branding. So, potentially, potentially a variance, but we'll work with you. And, I mean, it's not, there's a whole signage department and, and so it's not for me specifically to make that decision. But we'll work with you and we do that in every community, so.
So hypothetically, we say we will not allow any variances. This is the only one that we're going to allow this type of signage, which according to what a variance is, it should require that you have hardship according to it. This is not showing hardship because it's still having your, your brandage and your sign. Will you still be open to keep it as is? Or will you continue moving forward with the blue wall, with the spark and the giant lid signs showing into the neighborhood side, mind you, and more to the turnpike?
And we will want our, we will want our branding, yes. But we'll work with you, yeah, I mean...
I believe it has to be within the, the motive of, the motif of the PUD, which I believe states like with, with Publix. I mean, you guys would know that better than I would. I'm not sure if that, if that parcel's part of the same PUD as a Publix. It is, so it is. So, it has to stick within that same design structure as a Publix, so, yeah. So, to answer your question, no, it's not allowed. Because it's not part of the same motif and structure. And then the last question I had...
Excuse me.
Yes.
Skorman is part of the same PUD and you out it up there.
We allotted, but what's good for the goose is not going to be good for the gander. We look at each project, you know, independently. And the last question is for, for the resident, my neighbor. When it comes to the proximity of the Walmart location to her house, which again is approximately fifteen-hundred feet, what will Walmart and Sam's Club do to limit noise pollution, side pollution, et cetera? And again, the, the signage was more on that, on that light pollution, right? But what will you do for the noise, in particular for this resident with her special needs? How are you going to be able to curtail some of those concerns that she has? And sorry, I don't mean to pick on this resident, but this is the closest one.
Yeah, no, I, I get, I, I get it. You guys live in the community. Yeah, you guys, you guys have these concerns, they're real concerns, I get it.
I, I, what I'll say, we've listened to the concerns and I want you guys to know that the concerns are valid. Some of these, we have to take back to our team to say, hey, here are the concerns of the community. What can we do to make sure we show up the right way for the community? So, I think that's one we would have to take back.
So, is it fair to say that some of these questions that we've asked, you will, to your point, go back to corporate, go back to your team? And during the first hearing, if it does come through for us, will you be able to be, you'll be ready to answer and respond to some of these questions that we've asked?
Absolutely. I've taken notes on pretty much every question that was asked here today. So, we can go back to our corporate team to make sure we validate these things.
Thank you. That's all for me.
Why would you put a Walmart supercenter right next to a Sam's Club?
Right, yeah. That's, and, and I hear you and I, and I honestly, I respect it because I also have more questions too. But we're, we're done with the questions and I plan on after the meeting is approach them and ask them one-on-one. And if you can do that, that'll be great. And for me, I will do the same. But I'll wait after you. I'll wait. My turn. Thank you. Anybody else need to answer any further questions? Applicants? Thank you. Can, can you guys reflect on the safety?
Yeah, um, yeah, I'll go over and I, and I'll be very specific in regards to our talking points towards safety. So, what I'll tell you, we do have a proactive partnership with law enforcement in the community. We have a specific department that's dedicated to that partnership within our store. We work really closely with them to ensure that we're curtailing any behaviors from crime. What I'll, I'll tell you guys, we won't deny that crimes doesn't happen in our stores because we know it happens, right? I think is what we do to make sure that we have measures within our stores to help with these. We invite local law enforcement to come to our stores to tour. We invest in high-tech technology that not only help our stores, but a lot of times help the community regardless if it's, we have technology that tracks license plates and things like that. So, we invest a lot in our stores when it, it comes to that. The onsite, the onsite security that we've talked about earlier, if it's something that, you know, is going to help the project move forward, we'll make sure that's something that we look to invest in. But I think anything from a security measures perspective, we have listened to the concerns and we'll make sure that if this project was to move forward, that we would have the right resources in our store to make sure that we can minimize the impacts of crime in our stores and in the community.
So, you, you, that's a very good point. Thank you for saying safety because I actually missed that one. Again, it's, it's no surprise to anyone that Walmart's, and like most, not to pick on Walmart, but most big box stores, their security policy is if they see shoplifting, they cannot do pretty much anything due to potential losses that could happen. How is Walmart, or has Walmart thought about how they're going to fix that in the future so that we don't turn into what we see on social media happening in California, happening in Washington? Not to bash on those states, but there's a reason we live in Florida and not in California or Washington. How are we going to be able to, or what is Walmart thinking of doing in order to not turn Mineola into the next LA, into the next Portland?
Yeah. I think that really goes back to our partnership with the local police departments. Usually, we see that happening in communities where the police department doesn't respond to those things. But if we develop that relationship with the police, the local police department, the sheriffs, and what I'll tell you, we encourage that even our grant money from our stores be helped to invest in these local police departments. So, I think it's crucial that we build that relationship so that the response to those things improve and then we'll see a reduction in it. I, I'll tell you, it's, it's probably never not going to happen. Any retailer that you go to, there is going to be some.
Right, and, and, yes, we know it's, it's, every retailer's susceptible to it.
Yes.
Unfortunately, you're the elephant in the room in this case.
Yes.
We're, we're the ones that are going to pick on you on this. And again, I'm, I'm not here to pick on you. I'm, I'm, like I told all my residents, I'm just voting in by them and I'm going to ask you guys the questions that they ask me about and that I'm concerned about as well. Not only because I'm a neighbor to that, but also because I'm going to live a mile or two away from this location. But also because I've had approaches from not only my own neighborhoods, but also the surrounding cities and surrounding neighbors as well. So, I want to make sure that, though I will not give an answer of how I will vote tonight or give any inclination of how I will vote, I want to make sure that the questions that have been asked of me are asked of you and that I keep you accountable for answering those questions as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you. We all good? Anyone else? All right. With that said...
Like, like what I'm going to do is I'm actually going to close the meeting. And if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to the applicants here, email, but whatever the case may be. I'm going to wait because I have a question that I didn't get to ask. And, and we'll take it from there. Everyone, thank you so much for coming out this evening. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I have a first. Can I get a second? I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, sign. Good night, guys. Motion carried.
Okay. I'm going to wait for others and then I'll talk to you guys later.